All right, we do. She's here. All right, welcome back from our lunch break. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our one o'clock, six point eight. Sitting as the Board of Directors, Lake County Watershed Protection District, consider to A, wave county code, chapter two, section two dash thirty-eight, two point two two, due to the unique nature of services and B, award Clear Lake LG Sonic Buoy Harmful Algal Bloom Mitigation Project in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents and authorize the Chair to sign and the Water Resources Director to execute the contract between the Watershed Protection District and LG Sonic. All right, Dr. Upadhyay.
Yeah, so, um, so I will give an executive summary and then I can address any questions uh, that might we have and then uh, we also have um, the LG Sonic representative online, so if we have any question for him, he can address as well.
All right.
Um, the Clear Lake LG Sonic Buoy Harmful Algae Bloom Mitigation Project is designed to reduce the harmful impacts of blue green, blue green algae and cyanobacteria while lowering processing cost for drinking water purveyors. Clear Lake, one of the oldest lake in North America, faces annual contamination from harmful algae blooms fueled by phosphorus nitrogen and rising temperatures. With sixty percent of lake currently or Lake County relying on Clear Lake for drinking water, addressing harmful algae bloom is a priority. This twenty-four month project involves the purchase, installation and operation of fourteen algal mitigation buoys from LG Sonic incorporating interactive algae control software. The system utilizes ultrasonic wave to inhabit, to inhibit algae growth by reducing buoyancy and nutrient access, preventing toxic blooms without harmful, without harming aquatic life. The Lake County Water Resources Department will oversee implementation and long-term maintenance in partnership with LG Sonic. Uh, grant funding for this project was made available in two thousand and twenty-four and due to the unique nature of the technology, the project qualifies as a sole source procurement based on the original LG Sonic proposal. The project will be funded through budget unit eight one oh nine and reimbursed by eleven twenty. So eight one oh nine is the Watershed Protection District main account and then eleven twenty is the admin account. Uh, the anticipated construction cost uh, was about a million dollar with LG Sonic deploying ten MC MPC buoy light units and four MPC buoy pro units along with staff training and a contracted, for a contracted cost of nine hundred and twenty-one um, thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents with sixty thousand to cover the staff time for a total amount of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents.
Yeah, that's. All right. Did you have anything, Supervisor Sabatier?
Um, yes, I appreciated the fact that we added this to our mitigation CDBG grant. Uh, this was approved as well as I think the other projects that were along with this. Uh, excited when we got awarded uh, by the state, our state contract and happy to be in this position today where we can move forward and um, hope to see some impacts to our lake and if the impact is what we hope and anticipate to see that maybe this is something we can look at further uh, on down the road to expand. Cause I know this is not the only area in our lake that does experience massive algal blooms.
Supervisor Pisca and then Vice Chair.
Uh, well, I'm glad that. I'm glad that we were able to get grant funding for this. I have some concerns about the overall plan that are not in the contract yet and I'd really like to see that filled out before we move forward. Um, you know, this is a, and, and I did send the questions to staff earlier to look at. You know, this is gonna, I think there's impacts to navigation on the lake. Safety concerns, I don't know where the county falls for risk. I know we have our sheriff here to see um, if he has any input or if he's been part of the discussion. I think educating the public is a big piece of this too. I'm very concerned about vandalism and tampering with them and damage and what the plan is for replacement and where that funding comes from and um, and then the partners that are list, potential partners that are listed on the end, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a cohesive plan for them to be involved yet. So, I, you know, I don't wanna get off on running with this project without really clearly thinking through a lot of these things like, you know, I just imagine, I know people are gonna like run into them and jump on them and jump off of them and I have seen people rip solar panels off road signs in Cobb. So, you know, these are the type of realities I think we're gonna run into and so I'd just like to see a better developed plan and who's gonna be running plane on this, is this water resources, is this gonna be marine patrol, like? How is this all gonna work? Um, so these are all the questions that, you know, I still have from our last conversation. I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I have a, I have some questions. I'll comment first that I think this is um, it's great that we're looking at the technology and trying to bring in these projects that are gonna mitigate some of these problems in the lake. It's critical that we continue to work on these things for, you know, to, to keep the lake attractive for recreation and also the water usage that, that uh, we draw out of there. My first question, I, I know the staff report and you mentioned it that there's no harm to aquatic life. Um, does that also account for like waterfowl and other bird life that's on the lake? Do we know anything about that?
Yeah, I will refer it to LG Sonic uh, representative. Because I think the information we have received um, was like there is no adverse impact and I think that's what they presented in their last update or presentation to the board.
Okay, this is the first time I'm seeing or I'm learning about this, you know, with this coming on this agenda, so.
If he would like to, is he a presenter or, okay?
DJ DPC, LG Sonic.
There you go.
Thank you, board member. There is no, there is no known concern to wildlife, including um, bird, bird habitat and to our usual experience, we actually find that, that the, the, the birds like to congregate on, on the buoys and the enhanced water quality tends to enhance their ability to, to hunt and to use the fish, fish uh, resources to their advantage. And another advantage of the buoys too is we definitely see a shift towards green algae dominance, which, which is natural to, to Clear Lake, which we expect to also provide some positive impacts to the Clear Lake catch.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question I had was, I understand in reading the um, the contract that we're gonna have to facilitate the appropriate boat for installation. Um, do we, do we have that or we can have to hire a, a barge contractor and is that additional cost that's not in the contract?
Um, yeah, I think we did had a discussion with them. Um, so I think we have to um, we discussed saying depending on the size of the buoy itself, the boat we have might not work. We need something bigger. Uh, but uh, I think the, what came out from the discussion is like we can work it out once we have um, like the plan to go ahead with this project. Yeah, because I think there are the local um, port rental or something uh, which we can do because all, deploying all this, they will take like three days or two to three days, so we can rent a boat for that period of time.
So we'd be looking to rent a boat and have our own staff do the installation?
Um, so our staff would be present during all that time to um, to help out and I think our plan is also to reach out to city of Clear Lake if they can uh, also have one or two of their staff be there. Um, but um, right now, um, we are just waiting whether we are going ahead with this project or not. But we did had discussion at different lines.
Okay, um, another question I had that I didn't see outlined was, um, do these buoys have like lights on them for if boats are navigating at night and?
Yes, so these comes with their own lights, but we will also install like the navigational buoys, hazard buoys around them, so that, this would be like an additional round of safety. And also we talked about saying a reflective strip attached to them, so somebody coming at the nighttime, they can, like how we have in the cars or vehicles, uh, that kind of stuff. It can be more visible at nighttime as well.
Okay, and then the other um, main concern I, I had was uh, if, if the sheriff had been involved in any discussions about the, the, the planning of where these were gonna be located, being that he runs our marine patrol, so I was wanting to find out if we'd had any discussions there. I don't believe we, we have. Uh, but I think that's important as well to work into the uh, the installation planning or navigation plan um, for the, for the public regarding these buoys.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, like moving forward, probably we can include them uh, in our discussion, but for the specific location, because they are going on, on the east side of the lake, so that location is very specific because we want to address on that particular area because that's more affected. Um, as far as they go, I, I don't think there is like a specific pinpoint location kind of thing. We can move them around little bit here and there. Um, but yeah, I think that even the one which you see on the map is kind of very broad, so uh, as far as they overlap each other, I think that's, that's what we are looking at, so no areas left in between.
So, the, cause there's the map in the presentation and then there's the map that's on its own, so.
Yeah, I looked at both of those maps and.
Which one are we looking at for the plan?
And I was also curious if that.
Is it this or you wanna?
This one is the map on the.
I was gonna let him finish.
Okay, okay.
So these are like the locations.
That's the one, not the other one that's in the presentation?
Uh, I think they are the same. This is the zoomed in version.
Yeah.
That's the zoom.
They were similar. Um, and then I guess I wasn't sure if this area of the lake, I know it's around the Clear Lake Highlands, is this all within a five mile or a restricted uh, speed area or some of this outside of that?
So the restricted speed is very close to uh, lake shore, uh, like when you come closer. But I think there would be uh, areas in between here where the speed would be higher or, but we do plan to, like when we install these, put like Facebook ads or the public uh, launch, boat launches, we will have a map of these thing posted on the launch site. So people can look at it beforehand and, and because um, water resource is also in charge for the lake navigation, so we can also um, put out like public awareness or other kind of thing where how we inform uh, public because we do have RAM monitors on the ground, so that can be part of our information um, to get the information out.
Okay. I believe those were my questions at this point.
Yeah, Maria, did you have something to add to that? I seen that you had your hand up and then Supervisor Sabatier, once she's finished, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, uh, Maria Turner, Community Development Director, just letting uh, you know that Sequa review is actually ongoing. We do have a, a few requests for information to the Water Resources Department that we're still waiting to hear back on. We are hopeful for an exemption, but we have not had the opportunity to make that determination yet. Thank you. Uh, so I would appreciate it if this approval could be, uh, if the board intends to approve it, that it be done contingent on uh, completion of Sequa. Thanks.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And on that last comment, rightfully so, um, that is a part of the process. Um, I had the, some similar questions. Uh, my first question was its impact to wildlife. Um, I could only base it on the information that we've received, uh, but I know that's a sensitive subject for us uh, overall in a freshwater lake and we wanna make sure that there's not gonna be any kind of adverse impact to whether it's the hitch or any of the other wildlife that it interacts with. Uh, we definitely talked about safety a whole lot when it came to uh, boater safety. Um, that uh, we wanted to make sure there was lights, there's already lights. Uh, we talked about putting sticker of property of the county of Lake and obviously a conversation with the sheriff, cause I know that LG Sonic said that in other areas uh, they do put stickers that are more alerting to boaters by put, uh, showing the sheriff insignia, please don't touch or something like that. Obviously, we would need to get approval to do so, uh, but those things uh, can easily be done and added on to it. Um, boats already navigate around some of the buoys that do exist, especially in that southern part of the lake. There is one in between, I wanna say it's close to uh, Monitor Point, maybe a little further out towards Lily Cove and Jago Bay. Uh, there's a light that um, a beacon that flashes all day long, all night long. Um, I don't believe that is a continuous issue. It may have been an issue once or, or every so often. Uh, but it's not something that I've heard uh, since been in this board that that has been an issue and I think people navigate around those types of uh, barriers quite easily, uh, because it's so visible. Um, as far as people uh, vandalizing, I, I, I don't know that we have the ability to ever control crazy attitudes and behaviors. Um, and that um, from the, my understanding of LG Sonic and their experience in other recreational lakes where these things exist, uh, there has been very little to no vandalism, again with the stickers and the appropriate signage and everything else. Uh, is it possible? Yes, we do have, uh, we got a list of all the um, items on the buoy that are um, have warranties on it, uh, so I, I, I can't specifically speak to that. Maybe LG Sonic might be able to speak better to that. Um, and as far as the maintenance of it, uh, dur, the, the way it will be deployed, at least in the conversations we've had thus far, it would be at Thompson Harbor. Uh, it would be built right there and then at Thompson Harbor and so there would be the ability for uh, the training of how these devices are put together. Uh, and as we watch and take part in putting it together in the first place, the buoys will be attached to a boat which will then be dragged out because it's a floating device uh, to its location, set up with a anchor and then decided that this is the location. Um, as Director Upadhyay had mentioned, it's easy to move these things around. If we need to, there is an anchor, a very heavy weight attached to it, so it's not easy for anyone to just move it around. Uh, but if we find that it's not uh, giving us the leverage that we're looking for to do the impact, have the impact on the algae, like we are hoping, that we can move it around slightly just to make sure that we have it in the right spots and that might be uh, the first couple of steps of finding exactly where things need to be situated in order to have the best impact. Um, there are some logistics that I didn't wanna get into in the first place before getting approval for this contract, uh, such as uh, sitting down with the city of Clear Lake and getting a plan of where, where do these uh, pallets, there's fourteen pallets, I believe, that are supposed to be delivered to us. Where do we place them and position them so that it's most easily accessible and decrease the potential of logistical issues when it becomes the day of uh, manu, putting these together and then deploying them out in, in the lake. And so I didn't wanna take up any more time than we needed until this contract was approved. Uh, and again, I have no issues with approving this contract um, uh, with the condition of we need to meet Sequa. And I hope that helps.
That was, that was the only thing I was concerned about. Like, I sponsored this with you, so. Um, we didn't wanna duly run LG Sonic with hypolimnetic, so.
And I hope both
Work.
can create the outcomes that we're looking for.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know the timelines on this sequence, but I'm gonna assume that um, we don't have a, a concern with the timeline right now with when the grant has to be, start being used or?
And, and if I may, I, I apologize, but I believe you said two years, but it's a three-year contract uh, mainly to check in and make sure that uh, it's working the way that it should and also the contract fulfills the cost of the data collection that we have. Uh, as you see, within the contract, there is a um, situation where if we feel we're not getting the adequate outcomes, that we can return some of the um, buoys but still keeping the four that collect data, cause there's a belief in the department, there's a belief in my personal opinion that collecting data is vital to better understanding our lake and better managing our lake. Uh, cause we don't want buoys that are out there if they're not going to be doing the uh, and having the impact on algae that we're hoping it has. And I'm glad that we were able to find state funding rather than our own funding to be able to take this risk of uh, paying for this uh, contract.
Um, yeah, so with, I, I mean, I'm just really concerned because they're so expensive. And we did get grant funding because I really didn't want this to be generally, general fund covered. And so if there's damage, is that gonna be covered by warranty or do we have to replace these? I mean, this is potentially a very expensive project to have to repair or replace if things happen to it. And so I'm not really comfortable yet of where that funding's coming from or if that's gonna be covered by warranty. It's likely not if it's vandalized.
And I believe that we have LG Sonic here who might be able to better respond unless Dr. Upadhyay, you?
Yeah, so I do have like a warranty uh, list kind of thing, like where which item is covered up to wa, um, like how many years. But I think for vandalized damage or any other type of destruction which is done intensely, um, probably it won't be covered in the warranty, I believe. Um, and I, I will have probably them LG Sonic speak for itself, but I think because it's not like uh, it's covering only a small section of the lake and I think it would be a good experiment to see whether these things work in Clear Lake or not. Even if like out of fourteen, a couple of them get destroyed or not work as intentional, we will still have a good data on like at least two, three years, working with them, saying whether they work or not. And then that's where um, probably we can decide whether we want to go ahead with some project like this in future. Uh, because that complements like the other projects going on in the Clear Lake and we will know for sure um, that whether we want to go this route or not. But yeah, it would be expensive to fix those, but that's with anything, like I mean, that should not stop us from going forward for the project.
Supervisor.
Yeah, and I'll wrap it up. It um, I would just, I agree with the Sequa contingent on that and I'd feel more comfortable if we were, you know, assured that we're gonna consult with the marine patrol and get them involved in any navigational plans to include assisting with the public education campaign regarding this project, so the public knows that, you know, is as where as we can make them about what's out there in the lake.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And just as a response, hap, happy to have those conversations and make sure that we uh, prepare the public and prepare all other departments that may uh, engage with the uh, buoys in some way, shape or form.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to um, make a comment about this uh, item in this?
Good afternoon, Chair Krandall, board members, Alan Flores, City Manager, Clear Lake. Just appreciate uh, this item being in front of you today. Appreciate Chair Krandall and Supervisor Sabatier bringing this forward quite some time ago and um, we'd really like to, to uh, see this project tried out, making an impact hopefully on the water quality um, in the, in the Clear Lake area. Understand that there was a direction to try to get grant funding fortunately. Supervisor Sabatier, I know in particular put an enormous amount of work into to making sure that the funding was available for this, so um, I don't think it's a surprise to anyone here that um, along the shoreline of the city of Clear Lake is one of the most negatively impacted um, areas of the lake when we have um, algae problems and certainly impacting the largest concentration of population around the lake negatively. So, um, look forward to moving forward with approving the contract and putting this project into play and hopefully we see some, some real positive impacts from it, so. play and hopefully we see some, some real positive impacts from it. So thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure and give credit where credit is due. Thank you to Terry Logsdon for putting all of the effort in the mitigation grant process. Truly appreciate your work. I know that there was some pushback from the state at one point. Probably like most other grants, but you had to provide some extra information in order to get it through the finish line and truly appreciate the efforts.
Thank you, Terry.
Russ Kramer, Mayor, City of Clear Lake. Again, thank you supervisors for this opportunity to talk. Reiterate what City Manager Flora said, the city of Clear Lake and that edge of the lower end of the lake gets hit especially hard with this, with the blue algae and the buildup that it causes along our shoreline just because of the currents coming our way. Just to give you some perspective from the oldest guy in the room, when I grew up in the 50s and 60s, never had the kind of buildup of stuff that we get now. I liken it, I think, to a number of things, possibly climate, climate change, the heated, warmer summers, whatever. But we also had a lot more boat traffic back then when, and I think that stirring the lake up might have had some impact on our lower end. I don't know, that's not, that's a non-scientific explanation, but I think it's probably, it's as good as any. Again, Supervisor Sabatia has put a tremendous amount of work into this and I appreciate Chairman Crandall's co-sponsoring this with him. I understand your concern Supervisor Paeska, although please keep in mind that this is the whole, the whole part reason behind this is to be a pilot program to test different things to see what works the best and maybe the one, the other one that you're also testing will work as well. We won't know that until we try it and we're lucky enough to be able to try it with grant funds. Supervisor, Vice Chair Rasmussen, again, I appreciate all of your comments. I think, I think it's, it's wise to be concerned to ask these questions. I do agree that, that the CEQA process should, should be part of this. Hopefully it won't hold it up. I'm getting excited now that it's within, what, two or three months of being able to be put in the lake. So again, I would appreciate your voting to move forward on this today. Thank you.
Yep, you're up.
Good afternoon, Board. Sheriff Bingham, Lake County Sheriff's Office. I'm support the idea. I think it's a great idea. Thinking we can do, anything we can do to improve our lake is a, we should be looking at that. Tourism, fishing, everything it brings to Lake County, I think it's a great idea. From my perspective though, public safety being my responsibility and paramount on the lake, moving forward, I do have some concerns with these buoys being on the lake, especially in a narrow navigable waterway like that. As you guys well know, there is no speed limit on the lake. It is what is appropriate for conditions. So that being said, a lot of people have different opinions on what is appropriate for conditions is concerned in that lake. So, you know, a normal buoy like we talk about, little rubber buoy, you know, three foot, four foot tall, if a boat hits that, we're not talking about a catastrophic event, but you talk about something like one of these Sonic buoys that's eight foot by seven foot, 2.8 feet, I believe, above the waterline weighing 441 pounds, that could be a catastrophic event if a boat strikes at any type of speed. So again, I'm in support of the idea, I'm in support of anything we can do to improve the quality of the water. I just ask that moving forward, that we have an opportunity through my Marine Patrol and through the sheriff's office, I am by no means a water expert or navigation water expert, but I would like to have that studied so that if there's any mitigatable factors we can do for public safety, we can implement those, including possibly looking at in that narrow channel in that area, reducing speed limits in that area. The Board of Supervisors could pass an ordinance that in that general area from a certain point forward, that the speed limit is 20 miles an hour, day or night, that's a huge safety reduction in that area, especially with those buoys because we're putting 14 of them out there. And then those of you that have been on the water, you know that you have the entire city shoreline behind you with all the lights. It's very easily to mistake a buoy light for a shoreline light. Those are again, safety hazards, especially at night in the adverse conditions that we get in this lake, which is pretty unique. I know you guys have been on that lake or been around it where we get a wind event and all of a sudden you got four to foot, four to five foot waves with white caps on them, you're not going to see a buoy that's only 2.8 feet tall. So those are my concerns from a public safety side. So as I said, I support the idea of doing whatever we can to improve the lake, but just moving forward, I would like the opportunity through the sheriff's office and my Marine Patrol to study these, to look at them and look at what we can do to reduce that public safety on the lake. Thank you.
Sheriff. Any other comments on Zoom? All right, Betsy, if you can unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board. Betsy Conner, Upper Lake. Three comments on this. Now, as far as the CEQA processes concerned, I'm wondering if there's any possibility of having a categorical exemption or so we can streamline this approval process. We've been through this for three years now and we know that we need to get those in place before the high heat hits the lake and starts producing excess algae. Mr. Sabatia, Mr. Sabatia, you know what I'm talking about here. We've tried to get this through, tried to get this through to at the last minute to ask the sheriffs to consider the safety requirements. Okay, fine, but I would urge you to be really as collaborative as possible. This is the best option we have to experiment with this. The other comment I would make in regard to the location is yes, that's where all the water settles in the summertime, there's little circulation, you get that buildup of particulate matter and water quality problems for the systems that draw the water out of the lake. But the city of Clear Lake has a responsibility for implementing its own drainage master plan, which has been on the books since 1988, I think. The city was incorporated in 1980. They still have 49 miles of heavily trafficked unpaved roads that drain into the lake and they have a share of the contribution to that nutrient load. So thank you very much. I urge you to do this. We want to get this done and get it going before it gets too warm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom? All right, I'll close by and bring it back to the board. Any other comments or Vice Chair?
Yeah, do, as far as, once we sign the contract, what's the timeline to get these things here shipped down to Clear Lake?
I think it was about a month, like within a month, like once we gave them a go. But I think that's what I remember from our discussion, but let LG Sonic representative talk, talk a little more on that.
A little bit more. That's correct. We can also accelerate the timeline if we have the opportunity to do so.
And again, I just want to comment on, for me, the, I'm ready, you know, I'm okay supporting it, but I really want the sheriff's Marine Patrol to review this before these are put in place. I think that's a critical piece of the public safety. I don't want to speak for the sheriff's workload, but if it takes a month to get here, we're, we're not in the busy summer season yet. I don't know if the sheriff can answer, is this something that your marine staff could start looking at like tomorrow or start communicating with Water Resources?
Okay, and I'll, go ahead, Chair.
Simple answer, yes. If, if the board approves this and moves forward with it, I will speak to my Marine Patrol, have them coordinate with Water Resources and we'll begin looking at it. And I would anticipate that we would have to reach out to other experts to talk about different things for navigable, you know what I'm trying to say? Waterways and safety and look at some best practices and what we can do, but within a month, we could probably have a recommendation to Water Resources and to the board as to what actions we would take to make it as safe as possible.
And I think internally, like we did had a brief discussion on saying how we gonna like implement whether a hazard buoys or something around it. So I think Sheriff's Office input on that would be really helpful to design that thing or to come up with something which is more visible, especially in high wave kind of situation.
Okay. Maria, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make sure that before we start like doing a timeline in our heads right now, we have not performed CEQA. We would definitely always try to keep it at the lowest level if we have a categorical exemption that's appropriate. What we also do as part of our process is send that out for review because there are five different ways that a anticipated categorical exemption may not apply. One of those is tribal resources and so we will send that notice out, giving the tribes about 14 days to reply to see if they have a good reason why it does not qualify for a categorical exemption. Additionally, one of the other questions that we have waiting at Water Resources is who's performing the NEPA. Since we have federal funding dollars going into this project, NEPA is also required. So I, I just, we will proceed with all due haste, knowing that we have a timeline that is urgent. However, we will proceed with all due diligence as well. Thank you.
Thank you for stating that, Maria. That was going to be one of my comments, so appreciate it. I don't know if you were first or?
Go ahead.
No, it's good.
Well, who's taking the lead on NEPA?
Terry, I know I've seen you shaking your head, but I don't know. No. Dr. Upadhyay, do you know who's taking?
I think we did had a brief discussion with the funding agency regarding that. I'm not 100% sure like what our next step was on that, but we did start a discussion on that and we will follow up on whatever is required.
Thank you.
Necessary, yeah.
So the list of contingencies is getting a little bit longer now. Did you have your hand up?
Go ahead, Tia.
Hi, yes. Lloyd does have a recommended motion that should cover most of them. Then you would of course include Marine, the Marine Patrol as part of it too. Just?
Well, I also, you know, with CEQA, NEPA, the navigation plan designed by the sheriff and then if we have to make any ordinance change for speed, safety in the area and then, you know, I really want to have an identified funding source for repairs if there's vandalism. If we never have to use it, it's fine, but I don't want to have to come back for general fund dollars, you know, every time there, there could be an issue. So those are, those are my concerns.
Any other comments? All right.
Happy to hear what?
Lloyd? Go ahead, Lloyd.
So for at least some of those items, your board has the option of providing direction of staff. It sounds like some of these items may consist of a certain degree of coordination between departments. Talk about Marine Patrol and the Sheriff's Office side of things and Water Resources trying to come up with a, with a plan. So that can be, with, that can be done via board consensus to direct staff primarily Water Resources to work on those, work on those aspects that may be tied, that may tie in with potential or possible changes to the ordinance. So that would be part of the direction of staff. The environmental review, which would cover CEQA and NEPA and also pursuant to the recommendation of Director Turner, that can be made a part as a condition, as a, as a condition to your board's approval to this and it would be consistent with the proposed agreement under Exhibit A wherein both the contractor, well, the contractor would be obligated under Section 1.4 of Exhibit A to obtain all necessary permits and approvals for the installation of the buoys, ensuring full compliance with local, state and federal regulations. You have a similar provision there for the, under the county responsibilities under that exhibit under Section 3. So the, the motion, you know, with your board's approval, the condition, the contingency or the condition under that approval of the contract under the motion would be to obtain the environmental reviews and approvals in accordance with, with any environmental reviews and approvals in accordance with Exhibit A of the contract.
But then, you know, prior to installation, have the navigation plan, any ordinance change and reserve account?
Yeah, so your board has that option to either plug that in, in the, in the contract itself or, or provide it via direction of staff, via direction of Water Resources. The only reason why I separated the environmental review aspect of it as a condition, as a condition under the proposed contract versus the other items is because the environmental review is actually addressed already in, in Exhibit A, whereas these other items seem to be new. Can, if it, if it is the sort of thing that can be provided via direction of staff to coordinate with other departments to address these other issues, the navigation plan, for example, the ordinance, then your board has that option to, to give that by direction of staff or in the alternative, put that as a requirement or as a provision in the contract.
Supervisor Sabatia.
And just to get a better idea of navigation plan, I think navigation plan we talked about includes signage at the docks, conversations with the ramp monitors and I would say conversations and input from the sheriff, not the sheriff creating a navigation plan because I, I don't want to task our sheriff with doing something that maybe he reviews it and finds nothing. I would say it's in collaboration with. I don't want to task something that we're not quite sure what we're asking for other than we want to make sure it's safe, we want to make sure that the public is aware and for, to request Water Resources to engage both with our sheriff in order to get that accomplished and also to coordinate with the city of Clear Lake for any other measures that may be needed, including the logistics of the deployment.
I just want to ask the sheriff, is that adequate?
Well, he's shaking his head, but?
He's nodding his head.
He's nodding his head, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so yeah, just, so those are the, they're separate, one's direction, one's implemented and you're okay with some of that or all of it or?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. I think that we do need to make sure it's safe and I have no doubt that we can make that happen. I think that there's already experience in other lakes utilizing these types of buoys. That's what we've been having discussions about this whole time and if we need to implement more, then let's work and figure out what that is and implement more. And I am ready to make a motion.
All right, and just real quick, Dr. Upadhyay, just with respect to what Director Turner had mentioned about one of the reasons that could, you know, have CEQA, you know, inside it is the tribes, of course, and I'm just going to say, I know that we've been working in collaboration with tribes and I'd love to keep that momentum going. We're getting ahead of these things upstream more. If we can keep doing that, it's very important. So I, I do know that there are situations where tribes, there are artifacts because the tribes usually give back, they're either, if it's like a regalia or something to the lake. So at times, there may be something like that pops up or whatever. At times, I know that Supervisor Brown at one time had reached out to me and said someone had like been fishing and pulled out like a belt or something like that. So there's situations like that, so that's, that's one of the things that could happen, but usually they're just supposed to be in the water still. So like, and because it's not like how we remove dirt or anything like that, it's not the same, but at the same time, if something's found, they usually just want it put back into the water. But having the professionals understand or be a part of it is very important. And again, I'm appreciative of a lot of the meetings that we've been having lately so we can kind of get that under control and whatnot. So, yeah, I just wanted to state that. So ready for action when you are?
Mr. Chair, I'll do it in two separate motions. Move to waive the county code, Chapter 2, Section 2-38.2, Part 2, due to the unique nature of services.
Oh, second.
That's why I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
And then Part B, I move to award the Clear Lake LG Sonic Buoy Harmful Algal Bloom Mitigation Project an amount of $921,407.12 and authorize the chair to sign and the Water Resources Director to execute the contract between the Watershed Protection District and LG Sonic with conditions of CEQA and NEPA and direction to collaborate and meet with our Sheriff Department for Marine Patrol input and with the city of Clear Lake for logistical input and also any other. for Marine Patrol input and with the city of Clear Lake for logistical input and also any other further information.
Revenue or some funding set aside?
There's $60,000 set aside already from the grant we received.
Okay, Lloyd?
Yes, and just for purposes of the motion language, I think per the request of Director Turner that the reference to CEQA and NEPA, just to make it more general, make the approval under this motion be contingent on obtaining any applicable environmental reviews and approvals in accordance with Exhibit A of the contract. And leave just for further clarification under that motion, this contract here, the authorization for signature would lie with the Chair of the Board of Supervisors to, to sign the proposed agreement.
As amended.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and just to be clear, and Supervisor Spatie also included what the consensus part of it was. So, which I believe we're, we're separating that out to be consensus.
Well, that can be a part of the motion if your board wishes.
Then I'll second with, with that amended motion.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0. All right, Dr. Yipadie, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right. All right, so we'll move on to our 6.9. Consideration of A, update on Golden Muscle Prevention Programming, B, approval of funding request to support fiscal year 24, '25 Golden Muscle Prevention Activities for Lake County in the amount of $25,000. Dr. Yipadie and Angela De Palma Dow.
Oh. It says it's... Should I do that one? And then... La ta da. Okay. Can you guys hear me and can you see the screen? Okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you for having me this afternoon, Board. My name is Angela De Palma Dow. I'm from Lake County Water Resources, the Invasive Species Program Coordinator, and I wanted to provide an update to the board today on the Golden Muscle and, and provide some next steps and some additional information and provide opportunity for the board and the public to ask any questions or discussions on this update. And I'm gonna start off the presentation like I do for all of my presentations, is thanking the ramp monitors. This is a great group of folks. They're out there right now. They're out there in the cold, the wind, the rain, the hot sun, the fog, and they are sometimes the first contact and the last contact that visiting boaters have for, with county personnel. So this program only works because they do, and they work really hard, and they are the reason why we don't have mussels and other invasives in, in Clear Lake. So a big shout out to all of them. Brief outline for today, I'm not gonna give a detailed background about golden mussels. I did that in December, and that presentation is available on our website. If you go to Water Resources on the County of Lake website, and then you go to Invasive Muscle Program, and then we have a website here, the Golden Muscle Information. And there's the link for the presentation I provided in December. And also, this presentation I'm presenting today is also on our website right underneath it. So all this information is transparent and available for the, for the public and partners. The only background I'll provide is the difference between golden mussels and quagga zebra mussels. So so far, in Lake County in California, we've had prevention or containment programs, containment in Southern California and prevention in Northern California, Central California for quagga zebra mussels. Those are pictured on the left of the screen. You can see why they have that name, zebra mussels. And the golden mussels are on the right, so they are named so because they have kind of an iridescent shine. They look similar in shape and size, however, their coloring is a little different. These species, or these are completely different genera. So Dracened mussels are sometimes referred to for quagga zebra mussels, and then golden mussels are in the genus Limnoperma. And the reason why this is important is because everything we know about the way that Dracened mussels act and behave is not necessarily so for Limnospirma. So there's a large learning curve here in California, United States for these species. In December, I presented to the board the current distribution of golden mussels based on monitoring from the state, both from California Department of Fish and Wildlife and also the California Department of Water Resources. And you can see here, this is what the map looked like in December. They were first discovered in October, but there had been more detections every week. And then CD, or California Department of Fish and Wildlife determined that golden mussels have probably been here for more than a year. They found some that were a certain size, and this indicates they've probably been there for a while and just were not detected. For our purposes here at Clear Lake, for our prevention program, we consider the entire Delta area infested. Because these mussels can withstand a little bit higher salinities, it means that they can be in lots of places within the Delta even if there's saltwater intrusion. And a reminder that the closest point in the Delta is about 150 miles from Clear Lake roughly, so it's close to home. This is the current distribution map that's on the Fish and Wildlife Golden Muscle webpage. So the map on the left is the map I just showed you from December, and here is the current findings, actually from a couple of days ago, or the current map is on the right. And you can see how there's higher collection within the Delta area, but there's also some movement detections of these mussels down through the state water project south of the Delta. And I think Supervisor Spatie, you brought this up at the meeting in December. You said, "What about the state water project? All that water flowing down south, they're probably gonna go in there." And yeah, you are right, they are. Here's a closer up image of the Delta, and in yellow are some of the newer detections. So this is, again, from a couple of days ago, but really the ones on the top, you know, it looks like they were headed south, you know, kind of with the downstream movement, but we are seeing some upward movement, upward like northern movement of, or detections at least of golden mussels. So they could be slowly creeping up into other parts of the, the Delta, which are closer to Clear Lake, and there's a lot of boat traffic between those areas, Clear Lake and our neighboring water bodies. So just an update on the distribution there. So we, when we screen and inspect boats that come into our county, we have a form where they put down where they're registered. And so this map shows all the boats that are registered over the last couple of years. And I just put a circle around where boats are registered, and the Delta is somewhere in the middle of there that overlaps a lot of those areas where the golden mussels been detected. So boats that are coming to Clear Lake are from where all these dots are indicated. So you can see there's a very high concentration of boats that live year-round around the Delta, and then they come to Clear Lake or have in the past few years. So how have we responded to this with all the information that we've learned since they've been discovered? We have, we've tried to strengthen our now known as the QZGM Prevention Program, so Quagga Mussels, Zebra Mussels, Golden Mussels Prevention Program. We're continuing hot water decontaminations. Golden mussels like quagga mussels, zebra mussels are sensitive to 140, 120-degree hot water. So all of our decons, we don't really use chemicals, we use hot water. And we have seen an increase in these decons because we get those boats visiting from the Delta. So normally in a year, we might do maybe 20 decontaminations. We've probably already surpassed that, according to our ramp monitors, as, because we are addressing those boats that are visiting from the Delta. What this means is that we've also had to increase our ramp monitor presence on the ramps because we, we need to account for those boats that are coming from the Delta, and we need that staff there on those public ramps to ask them questions, do an inspection, and maybe perhaps do decons. What this means is all our ramp monitors are on part-time staff, and usually they work a season from like March to November with limited hours in the, in the wintertime. That is no longer the case. These are full, full year-round staff, and they're probably gonna run out of hours in May, if not earlier, because we've had to increase the amount of time they've been out on the ramps in order to account for doing inspections and screenings of these boats that come from the Delta. So these are all part-time staff that are ramp monitors. They have 900 hours a year, and we are, we are gonna run out of that, those, those times, and we're not gonna have staff available. We do have muzzle dogs that are out and at the, at the ramps during popular times, mostly pre-fishing for fishing tournaments. Here's a little video of a, of a dog doing a inspection. They can detect adult golden mussels. They are certified to the state to do that. And so far this year, we've added 12 more days in 2025 compared to previous year. So usually we start muzzle dogs in the end of March, but we've already had 12 days of muzzle dogs prior to this time period. And they're pretty expensive. They're like $800, $1,000 a day because you have the K9, which is considered a worker, and you have their handler, which is also considered a worker. So you're looking at a pretty expensive, but very much needed, a tool that we've been using that we've seen an increase in this year.
K9's doing all the work.
Yeah, but if, if someone wasn't there, the dog would just run around and play, okay? We love them. They are great to work with. They're very flexible. Their staff is knowledgeable, and they're also an outreach education tool. So you get multiple benefits with these, these K9 muzzle sniffing dog teams. We have been collaborating, communicating our needs and our concerns with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So they are the agency that issues fishing tournaments. Contrary to popular belief, we really don't have a say in fishing tournaments that come here to Clear Lake. We can ask them things, we can inform them of other events, but it's up to the state to decide what they permit and what they don't for fishing tournaments events in Clear Lake. We did mention that, you know, when you have multiple fishing tournament events, it's hard for us to do those inspections, screenings, and decons with our limited staff. So they have actually reduced the number of permitted fishing events from three to two per day. So starting in January, anybody that applied for a fishing permit, if there was already two events that day, they wouldn't get accepted that permit, and they'd have to choose a different day. So what this does is this eases the inspection decon, decontamination burden on our staff. So we have enough staff to go around. What this also means is that sometimes fishing tournaments now are moved to other days. So it doesn't mean we can lessen the amount of staff that are present out there on the ramps. No, it just means they're spread out and supposed to all, you know, on a couple of days a week, we're kind of spreading them out throughout, throughout the week and the weekend. Because of this, also, there's been rescheduling and lots of tournament cancellations for different parts of the year, so. Are there economic impacts to this? We have not done a study on this yet. We don't know. But, you know, if your business is used to seeing three events every weekend between February and June, and now you're only seeing two events, you know, if you're a local business that depends on those bait and tackle dollars and those fishing traffic dollars, you might be seeing a less, you might be already seeing some impacts from golden mussels by seeing less income throughout the fishing season. But I don't know yet. That hasn't been completely looked at, but that's something that could be potentially happening. We are still doing early detection monitoring. We partner with Fish and Wildlife, the Bodega Bay Marine Laboratory. So our staff every month, multiple times, goes out and looks at substrates, whether that's, you know, exposed shoreline, buoy lines. We're gonna be looking at all the buoy lines, the chains to see if anything's settled on there, and then in-lake infrastructure like docks and then shorelines. And then we also have these artificial substrates that we submerge, that we have them at points that we, we go out and we clean and we monitor. And this is all protocols that are, we have to follow by law by Fish and Wildlife, since we're a public access lake. We also do toe sampling, and this is showing a picture of the zebra mussels juveniles, which are called villagers. But the Bodega Marine Laboratory has protocols where they can look for golden mussels villagers under a microscope with infrared microscope technologies, and we send samples to them. The state is really gonna have us monitor probably more often going forward. And anytime you monitor, you know, it takes a staff a day to go out there, maybe two if they're going out to other water bodies. And so it's, it's a time-consuming but very needed process. So with all this information, I have a couple asked today for the board and some next steps so you can be familiar with the, the next steps for this process for preparing and preventing golden mussels. And then this is just an image of our ramp monitors. This is like 4:00 AM in the morning, right? We have fishermen that come here. So these, these ramp monitors get up really early. They're out there in the, in the dark, monitoring these boats. We are asking for some program support funds, so we're requesting $25,000 in general funds for the remainder of the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. The majority of this is to make sure we have enough funds to support muzzle dogs and if needed, inspection staff augmentation. So whether that's hiring more staff, having more, more funds available for extra help staff, or for contracting for trained staff, and I'll talk about that in a different slide. This is in addition to the 20 grand that was provided to us by District 1 Discretionary Funds in December. Thanks to Supervisor Simon for providing this for us. We've been using it already for some of those muzzle dog teams that we needed earlier in the year, as well as some outreach needs. And these funds will also help us, you know, we have some state funds from 2023, and we have the last little dredges of a 2021 federal grant that we're using. And so this 25,000 will help us kind of complete with those grants until we can get some other funding in place. And this will help maintain our prevention program, keep the lake safe through the rest of the year. That's the main goal of these funds. In the memo, we identified that there's also a need for funds to total up to 270,000 for general tasks under this, this project. For this, the remainder of this year, we're only, again, requesting 25,000. So this is the way that it's kind of estimated to be broken up, even though it can kind of be a little flexible, but this is kind of just our estimation based on what we have left in our current grants and what we see is needed, particularly as we going through a busy beginning of the spring, summer. The funds that are gonna be requested in the future for 2025, 2026, and beyond mostly would be used for, again, supporting staff augmentation, providing more ramp monitoring staff, more internal department staff support, more technician coordinator staff, and then also to come up with a permanent decontamination machine concept and engineering design. I've had several conversations with Public Services, with Lars. You know, there's that new park, the John Claas Park that's over there at the roundabout at Highway 20. When you first come in the county, that would be a beautiful place to have a permanent decontamination station. There's a lot of space there. Boats can come in, they can drive in, they can get their boat screened, decontaminated, and be on their way with their sticker, and they can go throughout the whole county. It's a gateway to the county, to the water resources here. And it can be designed in a way that can be water efficient for conservation and also be pretty easy to use. And so that's, that's what those funds are there to start that, that planning process for that. And that item was included in our response plan. If we ever do get mussels, whether they're quagga mussels or golden mussels, we're gonna have to tell the state how we're containing the mussels here in Clear Lake, and having a permanent decon station there would help us stay open and still allow people to recreate in Clear Lake, but also protect boats that are leaving the county. So it's like a, we can use it now, we can use it going to the future. Another reason why we're asking for these funds, both for the end-of-the-year funds and then for funds in the future, is because the state has, at least currently with their invasive mussels program, are not gonna fund golden mussels. So this is exactly a flyer that we got in the email from our grant admins at the state, and it literally says, "The QZ Grant Program cannot fund activities that discuss the golden mussels for the 2025 grant cycle. Applications with 'discuss the golden mussels' may be disqualified during the inter-agency review process." So we literally can't even mention that we're protecting our lake from golden mussels to the grant to the state to protect against invasive mussels. So that means that at least we have two years of funding from the state that can't be used for golden mussels activities. So that's why we're asking the board to provide funds to be able to provide those need, those, what we need that can't be met by the state for golden mussels prevention. There are Prop 4 funds available, so, you know, there, I, there's, we're looking at alternatives. We're not just relying on general funds for this, this project. In December, I did present to the Blue Ribbon Committee in the city of Clear Lake about golden mussels. They are very concerned, and they are very committed to be able to fund golden mussels project, especially something like building and constructing a, a permanent decontamination station. That might be a dip tank. Like here, you have a photo where boats just back up. There's hot water, think of like a hot tub for your boat. It's either hot water, there's a chemical in there that's approved by the state, where the boat can go in and turn the engine on, and all of that gets deconned really quickly. And then the boat goes on its merry way, gets its sticker. So the construction, the planning design that the board could support would be first phase, and the second phase could be construction. And so the Blue Ribbon Committee is, is open and very interested in supporting that, at least when I presented to them in December. The other thing is we could boost our mobile decon fleet. We have two decons already that work. We could have more of those. They're not ideal, though, because they use a lot more water than a permanent decon station. And yeah, I am getting ahead of myself right now, but I want to give you guys some hope for the future. There's stuff that can be done, that's been done in other places, that would be great tools for prevention and containment and really secure a future of, of Clear Lake, even as we're preventing mussels or if we do get mussels going in the future. Something else that is needed is an update to the ordinance. So Chapter 15, 1552 ordinance specifically listed out Dracened or quagga zebra mussels and excluded other freshwater invasive mussels. So I worked with county council. Thank you to Nicole and Lloyd for working with me on this, and we went through. We, we updated the ordinance, and it will be going on notice this Saturday. Thanks, Joanna, for helping me do that. So it should be ready for board to review and approve at the earliest April 8th. So that is something that is also being updated that would help protect our legal authorities to be able to, be able to screen, inspect, and decon vessels that do contain golden mussels. Right now, the ordinance doesn't outline that we can actually legally contain a vessel and quarantine it if it has golden mussels on it. It only lists quagga zebra mussels. The other thing that needs to be done is updating plans specific to quagga zebra mussels. So as you may know, I'm leaving in a couple of days, and there's gonna be a new Invasive Species Coordinator replacing me. Updating the prevention plan is a great activity for this replacement to do when they first come here. I did that in 2019. I got started in 2018. 2019, I updated the plan. 2019, I updated the plan, working with Fish and Wildlife and partners. And it's a great way to really get involved and familiar with the program. And so I really encourage my replacement to jump into this feet first and, and make a, an updated plan. And the state will require us to have an updated plan either this year or next year. So it's a perfect, perfect timing. We also had a, we had a preparedness and resilience, basically a containment and response plan that we developed with a federal grant. And I presented that to the board, I believe, last July. And our contractor that helped us develop that has already given us some changes needed to incorporate golden mussels into this plan because it was written before for Quagga mussels and zebra mussels. So this outlines what to do if we do find a mussel in our lake. And so this is really important to protect us so we don't get shut down. If we do find mussels, the state doesn't shut us down. Staff augmentation, so some of the, what I mentioned earlier about the funds we're asking for today, the 25,000 would, would go to help support some staff for the rest of the year. The 245,000 that we might come back and ask for, for the next year would help provide more staff augmentation. So the company we go with now, Muscle Dogs, would, they don't only just provide dog sniffing teams, but they actually have dedicated staff like our ramp monitors at other water bodies. So these are staff that are trained, they use the digital inspection systems like we do, they talk to boaters. They're very similar to ramp monitors, but they could help out if we need additional staff on, on ramps or during busy seasons. And so currently they have staff that work at Lake Sonoma, Lake Mendocino. So if there was a need for us to have more staff available for ramp monitoring or inspections, this would be a way to do that. These, this company, Muscle Dogs, also does training and outreach at events too. So part of prevention is getting the word out about what people need to be aware of and that would be included in outreach. And then they're also trained in the Western Inspection Database. So if a boat comes up to a ramp, you know, a ramp monitor might not come up and talk to you. What they might be doing is typing in your CF number and they know where your boat's been. And if your boat's been in Clear Lake the last five days, then your boat's safe to go. If the boat comes up and it was in Lake Mead, you know, a couple of weeks ago, they might walk up and start talking to you, asking about your boat. And so that's all this, in, in this digital tracking system. And this is going to be really helpful as it's used more and more around the delta So what can the public do? You know, get screened, sticker up, make sure you guys are keeping your eyes out on the boats. If, every, every boat needs to have a sticker. They look like this. They're on either side of the bow and on the trailer. Make sure people are familiar with the risk of golden mussels. You know, some people think that the mussels are going to clear up the water and they're going to eat all the algae in the lake and it's going to be crystal clear. That's not true. They'll eat the green algae, which is the fish food, and they'll actually release the cyanobacteria. So we'll get more cyanobacteria and, and less fish food and we'll see a collapse of our fishery. And we know that from other water bodies in the country. So, and this is the same for golden mussels. And just making sure that, that signs are followed. We have updated our signs around the county to these nice, brand-new banners and, and billboards and the making sure that vessels are clean, drained, dry all the time, every time. It's something easy. We can always, if we see a boater like, "Oh, did you clean drain dry? Thanks for participating in our sticker program. We really value your support." And then of course, if somebody thinks they see a mussel or anything really at all, call the Department of Water Resources, so 263-2344. You can also send the image over Facebook or email it to water/resources. And then if there's any questions, here is the general water resource contact. I didn't put my contact there because I will not be there after Friday. But we have a great website at www.nomussels.com and we really encourage everybody to explore that. And this presentation is available on that website. And with that, I can take any questions. Addressing, this is the first item, even though I did overlap and talk about the second item today in this presentation.
I think I was. You said that there's a good chance we're going to run out of hours by May with the current ramp monitors. Are we, are we in the process of hiring more extra help staff so that we could have people that still have hours left once that happens or?
We have a couple interviews, we have a couple folks, but we don't have money. We're at the capacity. So.
So we're, in addition to being out of hours, we're also out of money.
Yeah.
At that time, if that happens.
Yeah. One of the reasons why I talk about staff augmentation, I'm sorry if it, if it wasn't that clear because it's, it's a, not a super simple concept, but having a company that can provide staff augmentation on, on hand in contract allows you to fill in some of those gaps where you run out of hours without having to secure a full part-time staff. So for us to go out and hire and advertise and hire a 900-hour ramp monitor, we have to have those funds in our, in our budget line and we don't have those. And we're, we're full. But if we can do a contract with a company that can provide staff augmentation come May or June, we're running out of hours, we can have some staff fill in, especially during those busy times, like Memorial Weekend, we have a lot of boat traffic, so.
Well, that's good, is just making sure that we have something in, in place.
If the funds are approved today, then yes.
Yeah, okay.
Wink.
Yeah. Answered my question.
Supervisor Piesker.
Well, my question was going to be about the grants and if the golden mussels were still precluded from the grants, which you answered that question and it sounds like we have two years to hang on by ourselves, right? And fund this locally until things possibly change.
That is correct. And also I'm trying to finish applying for the grant before I leave. So that's, I'm trying to do that so you guys aren't unstuck without having that. The state has said that they are developing a boat access grant that would allow there to be a, a pathway for funds for golden mussel or for general, you know, lake activities like invasive mussel and other invasive species prevention programs. They haven't given us any indicator of when that will be, but I'm, it seemed like it's going to align with Prop 4 funds that are coming out. And I know on the timeline for Prop 4, as early as July, those funds can be given, allocated to departments and agencies of the state and then they develop their guidelines. So I would suggest, you know, go in the Blue Ribbon Committee.
Right.
And asking for as much as you possibly can fathom because they're going to have a, a lot of money over the next year that they want to spend out and they want to spend on this program and this program can have both. It's implementation, it's boots on the ground, it's, it's staff. And you can also work with CNRA to get in advance. So then we have money in our pocket so we can tell admin, you know, "Hey, look, here's some line items of funds we can have and hire some more staff."
Okay, yeah, that was my question about how to activate Blue Ribbon. So you got that? Okay.
Brad's on it.
Yeah. Okay, good. But there's still this period of time that we're on our own, where we have to deal with this immediately, where we need to find some funding for these projects immediately right now. Just making sure that's really clear because we don't have the option for the state grants for a while and it, the going through Blue Ribbon and Prop 4 is going to take a while. Okay. And then I see we have Stephen here, so we'll talk with him in a minute. Or Cassie, Casey, I mean. Then the other question is the public outreach. And I know we, I've had discussions with this in my town halls and I'm wondering if maybe the next person that fills these giant shoes of Angela's will be able to, or some staff make the rounds to the municipal advisory councils so that we're really educating the people that live here too and getting, hitting that as hard as we can, as well as providing some funds.
I think that's a great idea. I've tried to do that in my tenure here. I've gone out and spoken to most of the municipal groups and I, I think that's a perfect thing for someone to do. It's literally in the job description to do outreach, communicate invasive species topics to the public. So that's a reasonable expectation. And I can help. I'm, I'm still going to be in the county. Anybody can call me. I care about the lake, I care about its protection. I'm, I'm not leaving. So if someone needs help or guidance or, you know, they can always ask me and any of you can too.
I'm not sure if that'll, that'll be a, that'll stay on top, topic in one of my town halls. Supervisor Piesker.
Thank you for bringing this. Definitely concerned, whether it's the Quagga zebra mussel or the golden mussel. I want to talk about the ramp monitors. I think that the program itself for what it does has been working very, very well, but what it doesn't work with is the many leaks that we have coming into the lake outside of the public areas that we're able to control. So I think they do a great job there because they only see what they see. But I know from talking with anglers that come from competitions, they love renting Airbnbs right on the lake and they deploy right there on the lake. And I would say most competitive anglers are going to do the right thing for the lakes that they go to. But we have a lot of other outside opportunities for mussels to get into the lake. And so in, in a way, on one end, I think our ramp monitors have been doing a fantastic job at the ramps, but on the other end, I think we've also gotten slightly lucky that we haven't gotten anything due to the other access points that exist that we cannot possibly cover. I really love the decontamination idea and I'd love to know what the cost is for just one, because if we were able, kind of like a weight station for big rig trucks to make sure everybody gets decontaminated on the way in, that would reduce the potential of us getting lucky. And so I, and that, I'm not saying that would be a one-time fee, but what, what would the cost be to build it and what would the cost be to maintain and manage those things? I'm very interested in knowing what that bottom dollar sign would look like. On the other side, I saw a, the new banners that you've put up on those trailers for the, basically get your sticker, says, "Or pay up to $1,000." There was a grand jury report that was done not too long ago about the sticker program. And what I did not see was a lot of fines or penalties. How do we make that more robust so when we do catch somebody who's coming in without a sticker, there's a hit, there's an impact, there's a, a, a teeth, there's teeth to what we're doing. Education is key, obviously, first and foremost, but I feel that we need to find a way to be more robust in our enforcement of the law because I did not see that in the financial report that goes along with the sticker program. Again, I think that we're doing a fantastic job with tools that we have and what we're, what mission has been requested of the ramp monitors to do. But I think that, especially in light of all this new information coming from the delta, how do we make our program that much more robust? And I'd love to understand what, what, what would it take in order to get there? So I, I'm okay with the $25,000 today that's being requested. I think that we need to continue to monitor and make sure that it's safe. Before the larger number that's being requested for 25, 26, I would like to see what other options there are because there's, that could be a lot of money we spend with still all of these leaks of people coming to the lake and recreating in ways that we can't control.
Yeah, I was just going to comment when Supervisor Piesker brought it up that, yeah, we'll definitely stay on top of the, with what's going on at the Blue Ribbon because there is that 20 million that's dedicated specifically for Clear Lake. I just, I don't know when that's going to be, start getting released, but hopefully pretty soon.
We can probably contract as soon as July, August for some of the approved projects. And then if the request goes in soon, it, I don't think it can be included in that batch, but it might be included for the following year. But I'm not sure. This year's kind of weird.
Yeah.
But now is the time to ask for that.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so I'll open it up to the public if there's any questions on this. Steve and I see you here, but if you don't have anything, then we're good.
Sorry. Sorry about that. I opened it up to the public. All right. Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. I know that you mentioned that you overlapped and I want to look at Lloyd to make sure we can go on with action, even though, because I know there's A and B. She did the presentation and she also brought up B, the funding situation. So we can move forward, right? All right. So just looking for action.
Yeah, A, I don't believe A needed action, but I'll make a motion to approve a funding request to support fiscal year 24, 25, golden mussel prevention activities for Lake County and the Mountain not to exceed 25,000.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
And Angela, I know that you said Friday was your last day, right?
That is correct.
Well, thank you for everything. I wanted to also, you know, just let you know that. I just realized when you said that, you wouldn't be at the next meeting. So, you know, we wish you well on your future endeavors and thank you for everything you do for the lake and thank you for, you know, all these, all these, the years that I've been on, you know, the work you put in, so.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
All right. All right. All right. So I think that covers all of the timed and non-timed items. Now we will be moving on to closed session, which we, I'll read them all off, even though we're not doing a couple of them, right? We're postponing them. So what we will be doing is the 8.1, 3 PM, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Health Officer. That'll be moving forward today. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, County Council will be moved to a future date. 8.3, Public Employee Evaluation, Air Pollution Control Director, moved to a future date. And 8.4 is two, right? Okay. Yes, 8.4, Conference with Labor Negotiator, A, Chief Negotiator, Carlos Torres. County Negotiators, Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, Casey Moreno, Pam Samick and Diana Rico. And B, Employee Organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSAA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA and LCSMA. With that, we'll go into closed session.